Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Mr. Abdullah Matari, you can begin.
Assalamualaikum. My name is Abdullah Matari. Been living in Clifton for twenty-three years. I chose Clifton to be my city. I arrived in the United States in nineteen eighty-nine. I resided in Ratterson for about ten years. My background or my education background, I hold the Bachelor of Degree in Biology from NGCU. I hold a Master's Degree in Microbiology from Seton Hall University. I hold a BHD Degree in Health Science also from Seton Hall University. I have four children who raised in Clifton and went to school in Clifton. And in my work, I work as a college professor. Been here for about twenty-three years. I serve as a coordinator for the Biology Program in Hudson County Community College. I serve also as the Chemical Hygiene Coordinator. I serve as a safety fire warden for the college. I receive a lot of training and certification. For example, I have a certificate from NIH in using human subjects in research. I have a certificate from Elias on university active shooter. And also, I have received several awards during my tenure. The last award that I received was from NICE, which is National Award for Teaching Excellence and Leadership in the United States. It was awarded by University of Texas at Austin. This was May twenty-two. I work in many communities and I have very vast experience in education, curriculum standard. And I would like to contribute and I see the cup as helpful. I would like to add to the teaching experience of our children in Clifton. We work for our children's future. I see the way that we need to prepare them not only for the current education, but for the future demand. They have to be ready to meet the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matari. Next, we have Mr. Cora Lo.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank the PAC, the Pastillian American Community Center for hosting the forum today. Additionally, I'd like to thank the fellow candidates and audience for participating in today's discussion. My name is Cora Lo and I'm a fit husband, father of four, community liaison for an adult daycare and a volunteer football coach for Clifton fourteen U. I'm a lifelong member of the church here in Clifton. My family and I have raised, have lived in Clifton for six years. My beautiful wife and I have raised a thirteen-year-old, nine-year-old, three-year-old and a seven-month-old premature, which has kept us busy. I have a heart for serving the community. For the past nine years, I have served at various positions of my church. For example, I'm a volunteer security officer and work with the team to ensure the safety of our members. I take safety of my community very seriously. I like to use my background and training to receive and implement those, some of the ideas to protect most of our valuable guests, our searches that reach out to our, those past two years, I've also on football town from twelve U to fourteen U. I have the privilege to watch the kids grow individual and as a team. As a commissioner, I would like to, I would like to use those same principles, a team and dedication to achieve the goals, as we said, accomplished abroad. I am running for four issues. One, to protect parental rights. Two, to promote financial literacy. Three, to expand trade and apprenticeship. And four, to ensure our school's safety. I am truly humble asking for your vote and I look forward to working with you, parents and the future commissioners. Please pick six November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. Next up, we have Mr. Joseph Canova.
Hello, everyone. First, I want to thank the PAC Center for running this. This is the only forum right now for Board of Education. So I really do greatly appreciate it. It's the first time I've seen some of these candidates in person. So my name is Joe Canova. I'm number seven on the ballot. I've been a board member for three and a half years now. I'm the only board member seeking reelection for this year. I'm a lifelong resident of Clifton. I've lived here. I started out in Botany Village, living with my grandparents and my mother, then moved over to the Lakeview section here, actually down on East Seventh by Kierd Field. And now I'm in Dutch Hill with my wife and three kids. My oldest is in CCMS. She's eleven. My middle child is eight. She's in school three and in third grade. And then my little one, she's two years old, running around crazy. So interesting at home. I work in, in a college environment, actually. I work at Berkeley College. So I think that helps me understand a little bit about the students that are coming into the college and you know what they need coming in. I've always been an advocate for students to experience things at a younger age so they know what they're doing when they come into high school. I know a lot of times they're undeclared or undecided and I think if we, we show them things at a younger age, they're more inclined to do well and pick majors in school. I'm the senior director in the IT department. I report directly to the CIO, so I'm very involved in technology. I chair a technology committee I have for the past three years. I hope I can continue to do so. I, I serve on the NJ SBA State Board for Passaic County in representing all of Passaic County, but also Clifton as well as the alternate. And the reason why I even got into running to, into the board in the first place is really because I found out that we were underfunded in our state funding. And a lot of people talk about taxpayer dollars and you know how much money we're spending on things. And I didn't know that Clifton in the past ten years has been underfunded at this point, over a billion dollars. So that's really what got me in here. Time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Next, we have Ms. Samantha Basford.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samantha Basford and I'm eight F on the ballot. I attended Grove Hill Nursery School, Woodrow Wilson Middle School, school number five, and I'm class of two thousand and eight for CHS, where I was a proud member of the CAS program and I was on the varsity gymnastics team. I currently work at Columbia University Irving Medical Center as the Assistant Director of Residential Education. What that means is that I oversee a union staff, an RA staff, a mailroom, an athletic center, anything that has to do with community building, student conduct, a lot of things on my plate. I've worked at multiple universities. I've worked at Pace University. I've worked at Adelphi University, working with multiple different types of student populations, staff and faculty. I would like to be one of your Board of Education members because as you see that I'm standing, I look at things at a holistic point of view and a deliberative point of view. I'm standing because I recognize that in this room there may be someone with an unseen disability who may need to see my lips for me to speak to them. And I'm also kind of short, so I wanted you to be able to see me today. So I take everything in mind from a whole well-rounded experience. I have second-handly seen what it takes to be a board member, the qualities, the time commitments, and I have been at almost every single board meeting the past year and every single board meeting since I decided to put my hand in the ring and run. I care about this city. I care about the development of students and where they need to be when they leave senior year, whether they decide to go to a university, whether they decide to trade school, whether they decide to go to work right away. They need skills that help them in the setting of the real world, of interpersonal skills, and they also need to have a better understanding of diversity, equity, inclusion within each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basford. So unfortunately, the mic for the live stream wasn't working for the first four candidates. So I'm gonna kindly ask for us to repeat the introduction for the first four, if that's okay.
If you guys want to do it, if you don't, we can just pass. You want to say it again? If not, we can go to the next round of questions.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sorry about that. It's the live, we're trying to be technologically advanced, so the live microphone wasn't working. Would you, would you like to?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Burnseyak and I'm running for a seat on the Clifton Public School Board of Education. I've advocated for the educational needs of our community's children for over two years as I've attended almost all Board of Ed meetings. As a member of the community, running for school board will allow me to continue working and advocating for the education for all children in our community. I believe that the school board must be responsive and receptive to parents, staff, students, the community at large, encouraging an open dialogue. Board must take input from all groups and weigh the facts before making a decision. Board member is a trustee of the community that elects him or her. Trustee must be accessible and willing to collaborate with all members of the community. A trustee must includes, and it also includes district staff. Anyone that comes before the board has a right to be heard, not just to speak. And a school board commissioner must build public and understanding, support and participation. My effort says a board member would center on serving all children in the community. No one child, one child is no more important than another. We are a diverse community and celebrate that diversity. Our schools are here to serve the educational needs of all children, all stakeholders, all parents, all district personnel, certified, classified in management, as well as students that must be partners in this if we are to be successful. I kindly ask you to vote for number one on the ballot, Mark Burnseyak. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Burnseyak. Next, we have Mr. Richard Mahia.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have nothing written down, so it's not gonna be as straightforward as many of my other colleagues do have it today. I'm speaking today just from the heart. I'm one of the youngest candidates here. I'm only twenty-two years old. I'm Mexican-American and I grew up in the Botany Village section of New Jersey, which I explained before is one of the most neglected sections in Clifton. I grew up in schools where I'd see ants, cockroaches, rats, and sometimes even maggots in the food and around my desk in the classrooms and in the hallways. I attended school twelve, school seventeen, CCMS and the Clifton High School and graduated back in twenty eighteen. I hold a Bachelor's in Science Degree in Business Administration with a minor pre-law. I'm currently an MBA candidate and I'm soon, maybe January, fall, heading to law school to study law and educational policy. With that said, I currently serve as the Assistant Director of Undergraduate Admissions at Ulich University. And before that, I was a graduate assistant for the School of Education, making sure our teachers' standards were in order, making sure we were following New Jersey standards and having each student teacher certified to become a licensed teacher in the state of New Jersey. With that said, I'm running on three main things. Equality, transparency and representation. These are three things every organization needs in order to be successful. As I've seen before, you need equality for each and every one of the residents in Clifton. You need transparency. You want to be able to communicate problems, communicate solutions to our people because at the end of the day, most of our citizens don't even know what's happening on the board. Why is that? Because sometimes students and parents don't understand English. We have parents who only understand Polish, Arabic, Spanish. Where are all those translations happening? It's being lost in translation, basically. With that said, I grew up in one of the most diverse cities here in Clifton, New Jersey. With that said, we need more diversity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahia. Next, we have Ms. Merriam Weg.
Hi, everyone. My name is Merriam Weg and I'm number three on the ballot. I was born and raised in New York City and moved to Clifton eight years ago with my husband and four boys, soon to be five. I was a computer science major in college and worked as a software developer until a few years ago when I went into management and was recently promoted to senior manager, running several teams totaling fifty-plus engineers. I'm passionate about all things STEM and know firsthand how important it is for children to learn these skills early on, especially for those who may not have the chance later on, including minorities, women and children in special education. STEM skills are highly transferable and help in any career and in life in general, being that technology is in everything we do. The more we can embed these skills early and for all, the more we can ensure a community of students who are ready for the real world. My day-to-day includes project management of the various engineering projects as well as overall budget and spending to make sure we're focusing our efforts in the right places. I need to write proposals, create project estimates and budgets and work together all stakeholder input to make sure, sorry, projects can run from start to finish successfully, on time and within budget. Part of this assessment is figuring out where the quick band-aid approach is better and when entire overhaul will actually be less costly in the long run. These skills will make me a great addition to the Board of Ed, understanding large budgets, how to make the money go as far as possible, working with others to get the project through to completion and strong communication to keep all stakeholders, when the case of the Board of Ed include parents, staff and other members of the Board of Ed, in the loop and up to date on all aspects of the project. I look forward to having the opportunity to use these skills to enhance our school system. Once again, my name is Merriam Weg, number three on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weg. Next, we have Mr. Anthony Santiago.
Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. My name is Anthony Santiago. I'm number four on the ballot. I've lived in Clifton for twenty-eight years here in Lakeview. My wife and I raised our two boys here. They attended school eleven, school seventeen, when that was built, Woodrow Wilson Middle School and Clifton High School and graduated from Clifton High School. I was a member of the Lakeview Civic Association here. I am currently on the Clifton Disabilities Committee. I have coached Little League here in Lakeview. And I also taught CCD or Religious Instruction in my church when our children were younger. So I've always tried to help and give back and contribute and participate in our community where I can. Professionally, I am in Human Resources. I've been a Human Resources Manager. I have senior HR certifications from SHRM. But I currently lead a team of recruiters and do the hiring for a commercial bank. I'm also a real estate agent here in town. My approach is gonna be to always put the students and the school community's interest before my own interest. I'm always gonna consider how is this decision going to help and benefit our students or our school community? And some of the things I would like to work on improving is the academic performance. I think our high school needs to have a higher graduation rate. Our middle school and our elementary schools need to have higher proficiency rates. Safety is always important and of course, of late, it's even more important. So continuing to improve that. But that also includes having a safe, welcoming learning environment for all of our students regardless of their background. And then overcrowding. We have a spacing issue. The high school has over three thousand students. We need to have proactive leadership who goes out there and exhausts every opportunity to gain resources, grants, whatever it is. But if we can decrease the class sizes and make sure we have a welcoming learning environment, that should help, you know, benefit academic outcomes. Anthony Santiago, number four again. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to begin the rounds of the predetermined questions. So we will be starting with Ms. Samantha Basford and I will be choosing them randomly from a cup. So for the first question, if elected, what will be your top three priorities? And you have ninety seconds to answer the question.
So one of the first priority is staff retention. We have students who, students, sorry, that are taught by teachers who may have not had all the training and development that they need. So we definitely need more staff development that continues to be a conversation and not just a checkmark. We know that money doesn't grow on trees or we would definitely have a way, different society and money may not always be there and available. So we need to make sure that teachers feel that they are valued, that they are heard and that they are prepared for the conversations that happen in the classroom. That includes our bus drivers. We need to have more of a recruitment process that makes people want to come to Clifton to work, to be proud to Clifton to work and to stay at Clifton to work. I mentioned before in my introduction, students need to learn more about interpersonal skills that tie into group dynamics, diversity, equity, inclusion, and to be able to look at each other in the eye when they speak. You and I in the older generations can look at each other in the eye and communicate. If you've talked to a student now, their eyes are running all around the room. And that's also because of a lot of the technology that exists. We need to make sure that we're looking at our budget that is ethical in spending, making sure that there are no behind-the-door deals, that it actually benefits. making sure that there are no, um, behind-the-door deals, that it actually benefits our students, our faculty, staff, and administration before it, it impacts a board member.
Thank you, Ms. Bassford. Next, we have Mr. Joseph Canova. What do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education?
Uh, so the primary, there are a couple of primary things in Board of Education. One is to pass policy. Uh, one is to oversee the superintendent, employ a superintendent, um, ensure that he's doing a good job. Um, and the other thing is, is really to control the budget, to make sure that we're spending accurately and effectively. And that's a, a really a, a group effort of your, your board. Um, so you're only one of nine. It's five people to pass something, so it means that you need to work together as a team. You need to ensure that, one, the things you're doing are for students. So you always should ask yourself, is this, you know, right for the students? Is this right for the taxpayer? Is this something that's an extraordinary spend that we really shouldn't be doing? Can we do it through grants? Can we do it through other ways? Um, so there's, there's a plethora of different things that happen throughout those, that process. But those are the three main things of a board member. Um, and anything outside of that is really administered to the schools, which is a no-no. It's actually a fraction, you'd say, an ethics charge. So we need to be careful at stepping over that bound as well. I know a lot of people assume that when I'm running for Board of Ed, I'm on, that means now I'm an employee of the school. It's not the case. Um, so it's very important to, to know your, your role as well and keep that boundary between, uh, you and the superintendent. Have a good rapport with him and with your team, and make sure you keep running forward and, and, and moving the goalposts and, and attaining those goals that you set out as a, as a board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Next, we have Mr. Law. What differentiates you from the other candidates and/or board members?
Um, what differentiates me is that, um, even with work, I'm a team player. I go over and beyond, um, dealing with situations that doesn't have to do with me. I'm willing to take the first initiative and make sure that when it comes to kids, we look at the kids first. And, you know, I had a situation where a parent reached out to me, and she has three disabled kids. And I actually reached out to my colleagues that is part of a home healthcare company that actually reached out to her to help her with the situation. So I don't, I, as I'm, since I work as a community liaison for adult daycare, I have a lot of hats that I wear, and I could use my communications and all my colleagues that, to research for anything I might need that might help me with situations. So being a team player, going over and beyond, I don't have no problem. No job is too little, no job is too big for me. If I don't know the answer, I will find a way. There's, I never try to push on somebody else. I'll always try to work collectively with everybody, because everybody's, um, everybody has different point of views. But at the end of the day, if we're gonna try to create this goal and reach the goal we need for the students, we need to put our differences aside and actually come collective and actually move forward with everybody as one. Because it's not really for us, it's more so for the kids. And, you know, as I say, we're adults right now, and we already lit, we already been through school. So we're doing everything, putting things in place for the students going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Next, we have Mr. Matarri. What do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education?
Uh, the Board of Education have a lot of primary work, and, um, not, we should not be naive, and we point or signal one thing. The first thing we do, we should have an action plan. We study what we have, what we accomplish, where we are going. And we should set up goals, objective, standards, and have a working plan to meet all those objective and standards. We have a lot of issues. We have to look on the issue as the, like I said, I always positive. I take advantage from the negative, because the negative will teach me how to become positive. Uh, our grandparents told us from get-go, no bean, no gain. If we do not have the bean, we're not gonna see that there's something wrong and need to be fixed and adjusted. So we need also to learn from the surrounding area. We're not the only district. We are not the only kid in the block. Education is universal. There's a lot of research. There's a lot of, uh, publication that we could take advantage of. I'm gonna tell you an example of my own work. And, uh, with COVID, I did a study on, uh, in Hudson County Community College that I studied the performance of students during online. It's been published in academia. It's been published in E- repository of Seton Hall. Have been downloaded for more than three, 20 times, and people ask for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matarri. Next, we have Mr. Santiago. What do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education?
Well, I think the primary work of the Board of Education, one is to set policy. Um, and, uh, also to, quite frankly, act as a check on the administration and make sure that they're implementing the policy, um, and, and implementing it according, you know, accordingly. Um, and to evaluate, you know, we hire the superintendent, but you also evaluate the superintendent. So I don't think we should be just the rubber stamp. You know, we're elected by the people for the people, and so we have to be involved, ask questions. And, um, you know, no, we don't do the day-to-day, but, um, we hold that administration, uh, accountable for the policies that we would implement. Um, I think we have a responsibility to do everything we can to, to improve the academics and the learning environment for our children. Um, if we do that, you know, we, we, we have a responsibility to the students. We have a responsibility to the parents, but we have a responsibility to the community, even if you don't have students in the district. Um, and whether you own property or you don't own property. Um, it's our responsibility to make sure that our district is improving. And if we do that, that usually, as a real estate agent, I see buyers who are always looking for the communities with the best schools. And those usually are the communities that are more thriving. The ones that have better schools have usually a nicer, better community overall. So, um, you know, I think, I take that responsibility seriously. I take, you know, the journey of the kids' education from kindergarten to graduating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Next, we have Ms. Weg. What is the vision for education in Clifton?
So my personal vision that I would love to see is more STEM, right? More engineering concepts embedded at a young age for all children. There was actually, uh, somebody today from Clifton who, um, was, who, um, got into the governor STEM program, um, who's actually not a Clifton student. And I think that is something, um, that we clearly have talent in Clifton. We have very smart students. We have, um, you know, we have a lot of potential here, and we need to pull that back into Clifton. We need to make sure that we are embedding these concepts early on. Um, there are, you know, programs for older students, there may be more for younger students. Um, and that comes with support of the Board of Ed, because these programs require funding, and they require us as the Board of Ed to make sure that we are working with the state to get the funding that we deserve. Clifton has been underfunded historically, and I know there's been a lot of work over the past few years to make sure that we are getting more of that funding, but, um, there is more work to do there. Um, the other thing also is, um, bridging the gap, right? I would like to see more of, um, making sure that the education is building towards a career, so making sure that there are more internship opportunities for older students and that they are building the skills to be able to bridge the gap from an education into, um, an actual career and, um, and have the job experience to be able to build on that in the future as they move into the workforce and into the real world upon graduation from our incredible Clifton schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weg. Mr. Mahia, what issues do you believe Clifton needs to address in its academic program and offerings? What changes would you recommend?
When it comes to changing some academic promet- programs, one of the biggest things I did was go around and actually talk to students and teachers. Um, I have close relations with many students, have sisters, um, other family members and friends who still have younger siblings inside the educational system. So that's a great, you know, advantage to me, that I'm able to be in there and actually figure out what needs to be changed and what needs, you know, basically to be enhanced. One of the biggest things I see is regardless of whether, which academics we're talking about, each time I hear from teachers that they like to see basically less students in their class. I know each and every day, teachers have about 25 to 30 students in each class. And if you do the math, that's about 100, 110 students each day they see. That's 110 different personalities you have to deal with. Um, 110 different students, basically, you're in charge of from 7:00 AM all the way until 3:00 PM, basically. That takes a toll on your mental health, not just on a teacher, but on students. Sometimes students think to themselves, wow, I'm just a number to this teacher. Um, are they actually really teaching me the right things I need to be taught? Or are they just doing simply their job just to be here and get done with the day? If we could add more teachers into our schools, that'd be great. This would help relieve mental health. This would help relieve students from being overcrowded in classrooms like we've heard here before. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsack, what differentiates you from the other candidates and/or board members?
Well, the, the most glaring issue is that I'm, I'm the only person on this panel that attends Clifton Public Schools except for Mr. Canova. So, uh, and in addition to that as well, like I said in my pre, in my opening statement, I have several nieces and nephews in this district as well, ranging from kindergarten all the way to, uh, junior at, at Clifton High. Uh, so that's what differen- differentiate, differentiates me as well. In addition to that, this year, I have walked so many more miles than I have in probably a decade. I have gone to over 3,500 residences in this city to listen to the voters, all stakeholders, parents, grandparents, teachers, telling me what their concerns are over here in this city. So that's what differentiates me from, from the rest. And these are basically the issues that I have as my priority list for my campaign over here. And that's essentially to ensure that children get a grade-A education and addressing the learning loss associated with COVID and tr- childhood safety as well, to ensure physical and emotional well-being of all students. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're gonna be doing our second round of questions. So we will be starting with you, Mr. Brunsack. What issues do you believe Clifton needs to address in its academic programs and offerings? What changes would you recommend?
I think we need to get back to basics. A lot of the kids have issues. You know, the, um, the federal, uh, the federal test scores just came in for a lot of the students. And in the state of New Jersey, just on a macro level, New Jersey is at the worst performance of math that it has been since 1990. So I think we need to get back to basics. I recall when I was going to grade school, we did adding tables, we did subtraction tables, we did multiplication tables. I don't know that they do that now. I do homework with my, with my kids. It's not always like that now. It's a little bit different. Uh, some of the kids, a lot of speech problems. There's a waiting list for students that have speaking issues associated with the lockdowns as well. So these, these are some of the priorities that I think we need to get back to. And to make sure that the curriculum is associated with things that make, make sure that the kids have 21st century skills, that they're gonna be, they're, they are going to need to be happy and protect, productive members of our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunsack. Next question is for Mr. Mahia. What differentiates you from the other candidates and/or board members?
Oh, okay. All right. Um, what differentiates me between different board members is obviously my age. Um, I have a closer connection with students around my age and the profession I work with. I work with juniors and seniors every single day, and I hear their issues. Um, I also act as an admissions counselor, and I read personal essays and statements from students and letters of recommendations from other teachers explaining issues that are going on at home, going on in the classroom, and going on apparently in their school district. Uh, one of the biggest things I hear, especially from Clifton teachers and students, is that they feel, most of the time, their voices aren't being heard. I remember being in the high school, attending the Board of Ed meetings, and having basically our commissioners have a dogfight in there. Um, that's something that resembles very bad in our comput- in our community. And that's another thing that makes you wonder, like, why are these grown people who are supposed to be leaders in our community arguing and acting basically like children? Um, I'm only 22 years old, and I've seen that so far, I'd say, far too many times already. And I'm tired of seeing, I'm tired of seeing 40-year-olds, 50-year-olds, basically arguing for little things that apparently shouldn't be argued for. There needs to be a voice of reason on there. There needs to be people to say, hey, that's enough. You're supposed to be the leader. You're supposed to be someone I look up to. A five-year-old is watching a grown man scream at another grown man. How does that look like? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahia. Next, for Ms. Weg, what do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education?
Sure. So the Board of Ed has a few things that they are responsible for. One of them is setting policy, right? They are not involved in the day-to-day. They're involved with setting policy across the board. Um, they're also responsible for the superintendent, um, and, um, you know, Dr. Robert Tozzi has been an incredible asset to the Board of Ed, you know, to the Clifton Board of Ed, or the Clifton, sorry, school system. Um, they're also responsible for budgeting and making sure that we are getting, like I mentioned before, um, all the funding that is responsible for us, that we, that we are eligible for from, um, the state. Um, in terms of setting policies, so some of the examples are, um, you know, the calendar issue that's, that's been going on now, um, and the question of like, how, you know, should we reevaluate the calendar? And should we make any changes based on the current demographic? And I think that, um, that's a perfect example of where the Board of Ed would step in um, to understand where, um, the staff thinks they, you know, the calendar should go, where the parents think the calendar should go, and make changes to address a constantly changing environment. So, um, that, you know, those kind of things, like setting policy and understanding where we should go as a whole, um, is where the Board of Ed will add their value and making sure that, as part of that, they're keeping the open lines of communication with, um, the parents, with the staff, and with each other to make sure that everyone is coming to, um, decisions that will benefit everybody and making sure that everyone's voice is heard as part of that decision-making process.
Thank you, Mrs. Weg. Mr. Santiago, if elected, what will be your top three priorities?
Well, my top three priorities would be academics. As I mentioned, we send our kids to school to learn and to hopefully have a better future than we have. And so academics is key and critical to that. So, um, in addition to academics is safety. We have to ensure, if, if you don't feel safe, you can't learn, period. So you'd be have to have, make sure that we maintain a safe school environment. That is physical threats, yes, but also that the internal learning environment is safe, that a kid feels like they can trust and they're comfortable going to any staff member with a question or with an idea. And then, again, the third one I want to focus on is alleviating the class sizes. Again, the high school has over 3,000 students. We have 10,000 students in the district. A third of them are in the high school. So we need to alleviate that, you know, the mosh pit has been talked about for years and years and years and years, still exists. So we need to alleviate overcrowding. And the way to do these things personally is I think a Board of Ed Commissioner has to be an ambassador. You have to get up and proactively reach out, communicate, and maybe it's public-private partnerships. Uh, any government entities, grants. We're, we're all, you know, we have all good intentions, and we're speaking about what we want to do, but we need proactive leadership, people who lead on the issues. Get up, go out, and find it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Mr. Matarri, how would you determine your budget priorities?
Okay, this is a trick or treat, huh? First, we have to understand that the budget is set from Trenton. It's come from upstairs. And we, in Clifton, we are shorthanded, because Clifton District is the largest 15 district in the state by size. We have about 11,000 students. The budget that is allocated bare capita per student is not enough to fund all the program that we supposedly to cover in the school. So the, the classes, like my beers just mentioned, some of the classes are overcrowded. Uh, there is also limitation on teacher. We have teacher retention issue. We have to look on like policies and especially like screening policy to hire the more qualified and diverse stu- teacher for the diverse students that we have. So we have to set again, goal and objective, and how much those will need to be cost-effective. And if, uh, like Trenton is not the only source should be for the budget, we could seek from grants from federal government. We could also involve corporation to fund different program and extracurriculum and curriculum activity in our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matarri. Next, Mr. Law, what issues do you believe Clifton needs to address in its academic programs and offerings? What changes would you recommend?
The changes I would recommend honestly is bringing back home economics. How many kids can we say that know how to cook? How many kids can we say know how to sew? How many could do stuff with their hands? I could guarantee you, a lot of them can't do that. And that's what we need to really do, is to focus on that. Bring back to the actual academics and home economics that we, that I grew up doing growing up. Growing up, my mom taught me to be in
Growing up, my mom taught me to be independent. So if I was on my own, I was able to do things for myself. I coached fourteen U and a lot of kids that I talked to, they don't even know what they're doing when they got out of high school. So where's the vocational schools at? Give these kids opportunities to show them. So I want to be able to look into that more and give these kids different avenues as they go through middle school and they go through high school. Start putting around the people around them that they need to be successful in life. And that's why I feel like if we bring back home economics and actually focus on their academics, Clifton would be a better place because I feel like kids are being deteriorate, determined to go to school for something they don't even want to go for and then not really what they even want to do with their life. So I think that's what we really need to focus on with academics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Mr. Canova, what is the vision for education in Clifton?
Uh, so the vision for education is really understanding the fields that are out there that, that children are wanting, going to want to get into. Um, so it goes back to what I said before, where students need to experience things at a younger age to understand where they want to go. Um, the vision for education is really that. We're there for the students to determine, to help them determine in life what they want to be. The whole point of going to school is to do something with yourself later in life, right? To get a job, to, to work, to be with, uh, with your family and have a family and raise your family, um, and determine where you want to live. So, um, the vision for education is really working with the students to understand what it is that, that they should be going for and what fields they want to be interested in, they want to study for. Uh, that could happen through, uh, the, with the curriculum superintendent, or she could go through and see what those trends are and start offering programs to that. Uh, that can, that can be done through surveying students. There's many different options there, but you work through administration and you figure out what that is. Um, and that's how you identify where students want to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Ms. Basford, what do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education?
So first is to oversee policy and pass policy. So policy comes from New Jersey School Boards and it comes from the Department of Education. So it's a governing body and it needs to make sure that every single entity that goes under the governing body of the Clifton School District is being followed. There is budgets to oversee that come again from the taxpayers and to make sure that we are being physically responsible in the spending of the taxpayers' dollars. Um, while we don't see the day-to-day operation necessarily, but we do have to make sure there's a checks and bounds within the administration to make sure that they are following all the rules and procedures that need to happen on a daily basis. Um, the Board of Education does not hire staff. That is a superintendent's job, which I think a lot of people think that you are in control of hiring. Um, they are able to weigh their opinions on a matter, but ultimately it's up to the superintendent. Um, they do hire the superintendent. That is the only staff member that they do hire. Um, and the superintendent is in charge of making sure the day-to-day functions that the Board has put in place are there. There are many committees on the Board of Education that impact multiple different areas from athletics to um, student liaison groups to any special, um, topic that may be coming up in the district for that year.
Thank you, Ms. Basford. So now we will be, um, you can comment on other questions. So you can answer any questions that you did not have the chance to comment on before. So you may start.
Sure. So I'll start with the elephant in the room. I am not a parent. Maybe I will be one day, um, if I'm able to. And I will send my kids to, uh, public school because I believe in the public school system. Though because I'm not a parent, does not make me unqualified to be in this position. I have dedicated my life work to students, specifically students in college, where I have worked in property management, facilities, mental health, first aid certified, conflict management, student and staff development. Um, I manage capital projects. I've worked with multiple budgets. I've worked with students on the autistic spectrum. I've worked with students who have seen and unseen disabilities. I have worked as an advisor for multicultural sororities and they chose me to be their advisor. Um, and I've been a part of many executive boards. And on those executive boards, you have different types of people. And that's okay to have different types of people because you need to get a perspective of everybody. I may not always see eye to eye with you, but I can find understanding in the common ground, which is to benefit and push our school district forward. I mentioned before about being a well-rounded student and I think that's what the vision has to be in Clifton. Not everyone has the privilege to have a, a family that can support them or understand all the needs of the world. So it's the partnership between the school district and the parents to move students forward in life.
Thank you, Ms. Basford. Next, Mr. Canova.
Um, so I'm gonna try and hit as many easy as I can. Uh, how do I differentiate myself? So I work effectively with everyone. I don't have, you know, any problems with anyone. I, I do the best I can to make sure that, uh, that I have a good rapport with everyone and work with everyone in conjunction with each other to move everything forward. I do the best job I can to do that. Um, I'm available if needed. Um, and if there's anybody who's missing a subcommittee and they can't make it, call me and I'll do the best I can to make it there. There was one year where I was on all the subcommittees because I wanted, I was interested in every facet of it. I want to just stand, understand from A to Z, you know, how things work. Um, I believe differences are our strength. So I like having a diverse group of people. I like having people who have an adverse opinion than I have because in the end we may agree to disagree, but in the end we shake hands and we part ways. Um, and that's really what this is about, is to understand and come to a mutual agreement where we should be. I work at a college, so I understand the children coming in and what they need. I do have three kids, so I do have three horses in the race. Um, so I think that's, that is an important factor. My top three things that I would choose, uh, are, are referendum. Um, I think that's a big pro-, a big project that we all agreed on as, as citizens here as a two-to-one vote. That we definitely need to support our schools and support our facilities. So I move forward with that. Um, state funding, I've been saying it for years that we should be getting what we deserve, which is not seventy-six million. Uh, we've been getting initially twenty-six million, slowly moving forward. Uh, with that, we could even offset our taxes possibly. Um, so that's something that's very important. Another giant one is security. I can't talk much about it, being a board member, but it's very important.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Mr. Law.
Um, I feel the primary, the primary work for a board member is actually going to the level of the fa-, the families, the parents and the, and the students. Because a lot of people I spoke to, like I said, they, um, one case I just got over, that I heard over this past weekend was a four-year-old barely got into pre-K. And situations like that, why, it should be versatile for everybody. If you go on the, if your child's turning four or five, pre-K should be on the first front of the table. Why not start these kids early if you want to? Or there's a kid you gotta step outside their shell. I'm a type of person that steps out the shell and just try to go and work hard for the family. Like I said, I don't mind stepping out of my job, out of my comfort zone, just to make sure something is met for the family. And like I said, I, um, working every single day, I have opportunities to reach out to families from Clifton. And he told me a situation they had and I was able to turn, turn off my work hat and put on a hat and just support the family. And, you know, having four kids, you gotta be able to juggle. And that's what that could constantly do is juggle no matter what the situation is. And I feel that we gotta have a support where everybody is on the same page. Not just one person feels some way about somebody else or somebody's feeling differently about somebody else too. We all gotta be collective and know how to work together in order to make this thing go forward. Because I just did a research and Clifton is ranked two-hundred-seventy-ninth in New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Next, Mr. Matarri.
Yeah, I would like to look on the question that's, what, uh, changes needed to be addressed in Clifton education. And again, like I said, we need to study all of those and topics that we need to address. And involve everybody, all the stakeholder, parents, teacher, even students, they should be surveyed and asked question about what they think about different topic. We need to look on, again, funding and budget and allocation of money for different program. We need to look on curriculum and designing the curriculum to fit the student. The curriculum must fit the student. They are stay, they, the student learn different. There's different learning style. There's some students that have, uh, different disabilities. Some of the student might have some issue because of diversity or weakness in language and other topic. We need to address hiring teacher and retaining teacher, even yes, the superintendent is the one that's responsible for this. I think the, the Board should set the policy or screening policy that ensure that we can attract, hire and retain the most qualified and the most diverse teachers to give the best to our student. Safety and traffic control around the school, all those issues that have to be addressed. And again, technology application and use in our school. Technology is the big master or the, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matarri. Next, Mr. Santiago.
Um, I'll talk about how I think I, uh, I'm different from the other candidates. So, um, I'm someone who is solution-oriented. I want to think about solutions. So we've seen the Board become contentious at times and, um, if you are someone who is putting the school interest before your own, if you have those core values and you have that mindset, I can work with anybody. It's not about politics. It's not about personal. It's about getting things done and moving things forward for our school district and for our community. Uh, as an HR professional and as a real estate agent, I have to be objective. I have to bring a meeting of the minds, get you to understand interests and not just position, you know, my position versus your position. It's about what are you seeking to achieve and what am I seeking to achieve and how can we get there? Um, I'm somebody who is empathetic. I try to put myself in your shoes and listen and learn from you regardless of your background, regardless of your beliefs. Um, you know, you're here to represent the entire community and you have to be willing to listen to, um, and, and communicate with the entire community. So, um, I, I, again, I've said ambassador. I think that's something that's very big. No, we don't get involved in the day-to-day, but, um, we can't just say, well, the administration or whatever, we have a responsibility too. And this is my first time, you know, running for anything and I've met public officials who are also running. And I will call those people up and say, if I'm, if I'm elected, I will call those people and say, hey, I'm glad you won. Guess what? This is what's going on in Clifton. How can you help us? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Next, Ms. Weg.
So I want to speak about, um, what differentiates me as well. Um, one thing I do want to say though is that we are the Board of Ed, right? Not, um, an individual. So there is no one skill set that is the best. The, we are as powerful as our, some of our skill sets, right? We are stronger as a whole. So there are a various different skill sets that all need to be represented in the Board of Ed to make it a successful Board of Ed. That being said, my background in finance and in tech combined, I think would be an asset, right? Not the only demographic, but I think a, a good one that would help uh, when it comes to managing budgets, when it comes to, um, understanding where we can best allocate our resources as well as understanding where we can embed technology early and often, you know, within, within education. Um, so the other thing is, um, the way I come to projects is I come with a proposal, um, and an idea, but being open-minded to listen to, uh, what other people have to say. And I think that that's been effective in my career and that's a skill that I would like to bring to the Board of Ed. Of, you know, having an idea, having the starting point to begin the conversation, but also being open to other suggestions and making sure that when everybody leaves the room, we've all expressed our opinions and we all, you know, walk away respecting each other and coming to an agreement of, you know, what the best pathway forward is. Um, in terms of top three priorities, I have a few seconds left. Uh, security, I think is critical. Communication and budgeting are the three top priorities, I think, for the Board of Ed is focused on next to yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weg. Next, we have Mr. Mahia.
So I'd like to briefly touch upon the question that was asked. I'm not heard, and I'm not sure if I heard it correctly, was, um, what the Board of Education, um, is meant there to do. Um, I'd say we're there to help students graduate and succeed in life. I'm what the Board of Education prides herself on, the Clifton product. Um, I wasn't the best student in high school. In my junior year, I even contemplated, you know, dropping out of high school. Why? I wasn't doing so great in classes. I didn't have the support I needed in those classes as well. I was a great student athlete. I was involved in varsity lacrosse, varsity football, varsity track and field. I was on the mock trials. I wasn't the strongest student, but at the end of the day, you know, I had a support system at home and I had a support system with some few teachers and my kindness counselor. When the biggest thing I pride myself upon is that, you know, I wasn't the best student. Going on to college, I excelled in college. When I graduated, I had the opportunities to work for the state, Congress, um, Wall Street, concert production, marketing, accounting on Wall Street, finance. These are all skills I was able to develop after I left Clifton Public Schools. Why? I believe the Board of Education failed me and many of my other peers. Um, I have friends and family who are currently, they dropped out of school. Um, they're not working any jobs. I have some friends who are unfortunately they're in jail because of things that happened in, in Clifton Public Schools. These are all things that have never been addressed. Never. And I think these, it's time for things to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahia. Next, Mr. Brunsack.
Yeah, I wanted to discuss about the, um, what Mr. Mahia just spoke of, what the purpose of the school board is. And it's essentially to set policy, hire the superintendent and regarding the facilities that are associated with this. This includes transparency and try to compel the superintendent on what to do and how to react to it. And if there's disagreements, Mr. Mahia also referenced this before, you don't do it in the public. You don't hold the people in the public hostage with the spectacles that you do in public. That's exactly what executive time is for. All of us were invited this year to go to the State School Board Association to give us a glimpse as to what the requirements are of the school board. And this is among them. So it starts there. And if there are any, any disagreements, it should be happening or any sort of conflict resolution, it should be happening in executive time, not in front of the TV cameras. That's what adults do. And it starts with change, like he just mentioned. You could start that by pushing the button for number one, Mark Brunsack. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we will be, um, using the audience questions. You also have ninety seconds to answer them. And they are picked randomly. So, Mr. Brunsack, we'll start with you. There is a great need for substitute teachers in Clifton. Why are they underpaid and what would you do differently?
Listen, my understanding is that they, they temporarily increased it when the lockdown still occurred and we were, and they were doing remote. Mr. Canova referenced the amount of state funding that we are owed. The fact of the matter is, is that the voters of Clifton need to know that elections matter. And you need to tell the state legislature what Clifton is owed over here because they've been playing games with us for over a decade. That's how much money this, this has been owed. Once we get the funding, then we're able to increase the substitute pay and it shouldn't be a problem. We'll have a lot more leeway in doing, in, in, in funding such as this. It also helps in recruitment as well. So there are limitations associated with the budget. Prior to the, uh, you know, prior to the, um, to the bond being passed, they allege, the Board alleged that it was, the average tax increase was about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. It wasn't. It was much greater. If you, if your property taxes were like ten thousand and it went up, and it went up about fifteen hundred dollars, seventy-two percent of that, of that increase was a school budget. And it wasn't just a two-point increase. The rest of it was from the bond referendum that was passed. So these types of things matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunsack. Next, Mr. Mahia. What do you see as a role of arts in education and or do you prioritize art against any other subject?
When it comes to arts, that's, you know, a subject I hold dear to my heart. Um, growing up, I played viola. I was in strings, um, all the way up until my senior year. I had two great teachers, Ms. Poggi and Mrs. Babiac, who I hold dear to my heart. Um, they're one of the two main reasons I decided not to drop out of high school. Um, performing in orchestra was, you know, sometimes challenging. I wasn't always the best player. Um, but you know, I gave it my best. I remember I'd go after school, get remedial from his rabbit, who'd go out of her way because at that time remedial wasn't being given officially by our school. Um, she'd stay after class and help me out with my, you know, learning As, Bs, Cs. These are all things, you know, I struggled with. Um, even after playing for almost ten years, I still struggled with them. Um, on part of arts education in theater and drama, I loved it. Um, I was able to perform for Stanch, which is a speech and theater association in New Jersey. Um, one of the biggest stages you could perform on in Montclair State and Rutgers University. And I had the opportunity to stand to some great actors who, you know, shout out to one of the kids who is currently in Stranger Things. I sit right next to him. He said I was a great actor as well. Um, these are opportunities that I was given being in the dramatic arts and in strings. So arts education is, would definitely be a priority for me especially because many students see this as a way out of school. Many of these teachers are there to help out other students who see themselves not succeeding in any other place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahia. Thank you, Mr. Mahia. Next, Ms. Webb. How do you plan to reduce crimes in school?
Great question. So there's a few ways. Making sure that children feel like they have a place and they have a home and they are respected and loved and are part of the community, I think, will inherently makes, you know, crime go down, right? Because people feel like a sense of ownership and they feel a sense of purpose and place within the community. Other things include summer programs, which I know Clifton has an incredible summer program for their students, making sure that children are kept busy and they're kept in the structure and they understand, you know, where they can go, what to do, and they're always learning and engaged. And, you know, feel like, again, they have a place and they have a home within the community. Also, another thing is making sure that, you know, students have a solid education, right? If they know they have a plan, they know that they've worked hard, they know that they're investing in their education and they're trying to build a career, they're trying to go forward, they have, you know, aspirations, they have plans. They will be focused on their studies and maybe focused on, you know, extracurriculars within the school rather than potentially turning to crime. So all these, it's, it's a holistic picture and it's making sure that we are thinking about our children, our students. And, you know, making sure that, that everything, the whole student is part of the picture, right? Not just education, not just extracurriculars, you know, everything and every aspect of the student is part of their education and making sure that they feel, again, they feel loved, they feel like they have a place, they feel like they are respected and, and, you know, loved within their community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Next, Mr. Santiago. There is a great need for substitute teachers in Clifton. Why are they underpaid and what would you do differently?
Well, I think like any, well, there's a few different factors, but like any organization in whatever industry you're in, when you're looking to perhaps start a new job or change your job, there are organizations where you say, this is a really good company that I want to work for. It recognizes their employees. I can learn. I can grow. They have good leadership. So I think improving our work environment, the educational environment overall is one. The culture, right? The culture of the school system. And again, making sure that we're treating the existing staff well there. Not us, the polit, the policymakers, but the administration. And so one is making sure that it's an attractive school district to people who want to come here. The, the substitute issue, yes, the, the salaries were increased temporarily. And then now not, not a, it's a great, greater need, so they decreased it a little bit. But I think the quality of the people that we bring still should be, you know, they should be qualified people. You know, we should have a certain standard for the substitutes in terms of what they know and, and their, their experience and their educational background. I don't, you know, I guess diminishing the standard is not something that I would do, is what I'm saying. We still want to have qualified people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matarri. What is your plan in dealing with the opposition to the 2022 gender slash sex education standards?
Okay, I get the elephant in the room. Like, first of all, this, again, it's a state mandated. It's coming from the state and it's not only mandated from Clifton Board of Education, it's statewide. So all the district have to deal with it. Now, the, the district responsibility is to meet that challenge by taking survey from the parents, from the diverse group and see how they, what's their perspective on that matter? And what they oppose, and if they oppose it, why? And then address those scenario. Also, like the teaching, we teach health in the curriculum already from K8. I think we should be specific for a specific age, not fit all. Like K to five, maybe we should not introduce them to that. That's too early for them. Otherwise, it could be like repetitive and could be influence. So we should, again, consult, we should also seek experts from different diverse group, whether it's psychology, from religious group, from different. So we need to have an input from all stakeholders that involve in that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matarri. Mr. Law, what is your position on busing to private schools? What changes would you enact if any?
Sorry, repeat the question?
What is your position on busing to private schools? What changes would you have enact if any?
Busing to private schools, actually, my kids actually go to a private school right now. And that's a big support for a lot of families. At least it'll help us getting the kids to or from home to the school. And I believe that at the end of the day, it's about the education. So if they want to go to a private school, they should, the family should have the support. And they shouldn't have to go jumping through hoops to get their kids to and from that school, whether it's public or private. So I feel like if the funds is there for transportation, we should just constantly do that and get the kids there safely. Because at the end of the day, it's all about the safety, getting the kids to and from. And if I could know I could go to work in the morning, my kids get to school to and from, not have to worry about that. At least I know they're going from door to door and going from home to the school and arriving on time without me wondering what happens in the course of me being home, not be home for that 15, 20 minutes of what my kids waiting for the school bus. And I think transportation is big on all levels. So I think we should just continue to do that and support transportation on that too as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Mr. Canova, what do you see as the role of arts in education and/or do you prioritize art against any other subject?
So I, I think when you educate children, you have to teach to the whole child. There's a term, it's called teaching to the whole child. They need to understand everything in life. They need to know their arithmetic. They need to know English and skills and reading and learning and participating with others and getting along with others. They need to know physical education and how to take care of themselves and body autonomy. And they need to know things like, if they, if they want to get into music, how to play instruments. And I think that the arts and music are very important. There, there was an issue before I even ran where my daughter wasn't getting music and I was an advocate to do that for her. That's how I found out even about our budget constraints and the whole issue down at the state. But I think it's very important. My daughter did play viola. She continues to, to love music. My other daughter is starting to get into it now, only in third grade. But I think, as I said, teaching to the whole child is very important. They need to experience everything at a young age and decide what they want to do later in life so that they know what they want to do. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Ms. Bassford, how will you address the different needs of all Clifton students?
So everyone has a different ability. Everyone sees the world differently, the way we learn, the way we communicate, even the way we interpret it life. We have to make sure that all students are able to equitably be able to learn comfortably in a classroom. Everyone comes from different backgrounds of privileges, comes from different backgrounds ethnicity wise. So there may be things that one parent may be able to help support their student where another parent cannot. In the classroom setting, I do think that we have to help parents be able to have that partnership with the teacher by also offering education to the parents. Not everybody understands calculus. I sure don't. I got out of it somehow. That's why I went into higher education. So when you are bringing homework home to a parent, you have to make sure that the parent understands that. Also, I have a brother who grew up being dyslexic. He saw things differently and teachers were not always equipped to help him. Sometimes it just took a tap on the desk for him to realize that I had to focus. So there are strategies where you don't need to be a special education teacher to be able to support your student in the classroom. Working with autistic students, I have learned to be a better communicator and being able to address everyone's needs from the different ways that they can understand.
Thank you. We will be doing the second round of the audience questions. So Ms. Bassford, we will begin with you. What is your plan in dealing with the opposition to the 2022 gender slash sex education standards?
So we're going to first start off with that is a health curriculum. We keep calling it the wrong thing. It is a health curriculum. The first place to start is to go onto the Board of Education website and look at the many presentations that the administration has given on this topic. It's important that you learn about this topic from the source versus Facebook versus word of mouth and to see what it is. I actually admire the health curriculum, being a higher education professional and seeing that mental health is noted and how to take care of yourself. A lot of students I've seen not able to come with self-coping skills or resilience. And by within their first week of being in a college setting, they're asking their mom and dad to pick them up because they can't handle the transition. That's something that has happened more recently in my career than it did in the past. We need to also make sure that, you know, our bodies are different. We all have different shapes to our body. The way our body, the hair grows on our body is different. Not everyone, again, comes from a household where a parent will take the time, a guardian will take the time to tell you even how to properly groom yourself. We have to be open minded that this is about awareness. It is not about changing someone's identity. It's not about changing what households you come from and what you believe in. It's about understanding and accepting other people so that way we together as a society can be better people together.
Thank you, Ms. Bassford. Mr. Canova, there is a great need for substitute teachers in Clifton. Why are they underpaid and what would you do differently?
So right now, like many things going on in the market, you know, you go to some restaurants and they say, we can only serve X amount of people. We don't have the workers. Unfortunately, after the pandemic, there was a loss of a lot of people, even crossing borders. So in order to alleviate those situations, one is you have to put money behind it. You, you need to be able to fund those things. We did increase the amount that we were paying substitutes. We did get a lot of substitute interest. It did fulfill the amount that we needed and then we lowered it back down. And since then, we haven't had an issue. That doesn't mean we're not going to have an issue. It just means that right now we're okay. I know on the state level, they've been doing a lot of things, trying to get people into those programs. I know Dr. Robert Tucci himself spoke at board meetings about his One Clifton initiative, which is really to get our diverse population into the schools by essentially offering them a pathway to success. So I totally support him and his One, One Clifton initiative. I think that'll drive some of the people back into our schools. And hopefully it'll be Clifton people, teaching Clifton people for the most part. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Mr. Law, what do you see as the role of arts in education and/or do you prioritize art against other subjects?
I don't prioritize arts against other subjects. Just like I said, if we bring back the home economics, that almost could guarantee that these kids are going to learn how to cook, look how to sew, look how to build things with their hands. This is an everyday need that we need in our everyday lives. So when I grew up, we always, those were always a recommendation for our class growing up in middle school. And I feel like we are so far away from it. And the arts, there's different avenue will come to arts, not just music. There's, there's a whole bunch of that. We could be here all day talking about that. But it's, it really deteriorate, it really would help determine what kids will want to do with theirself after high school. Because a lot of them, like I said, they want to, they want to go to college, but what do they want to go to college for? We really don't know. But then give these kids opportunities to go to vocational school and see if they like working on cars, see if they like work, or if they like drawing. See, see what they like to do in those last two years of high school and then determine which college you're going to go to. You could go to community college and test the waters and then see how it is. And then make a decision you want to go to a four-year degree college. So there's different avenues. If you have arts into it, you always could see what other kids could do. And like, my son actually could literally, and he's 13. He literally could drive down, we could drive down the street and he could eat every make and model of a car. So why not put the right people around him to pursue his dream at the high school? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Mr. Matarri, how will you address the different needs of all Clifton students?
Can you repeat?
Yeah. How will you address the different needs of all Clifton students?
Like I said at the beginning, students are different. They don't learn the same. You have students that learn from concrete or abstract or visual. So we need to have a program that will be student-centered and will be engaging to the student. I don't just want a teacher that stand in the room and just like, you know, finish the lecture or the topic of the day and leave. It have to be engaging to the student. The student have to be involved and it should be student-centered. The curriculum have be, have to, have to be designed to address the way to bring the idea to the student. The student have to see the validity of the topic that they are learning. Otherwise, they're not going to connect to the topic. If they fail to connect to it, they're not going to learn it. So they have the topic or the way that we present the topic have to be with a meaning to the student. And again, that will come with more training, training, more workshops for the teachers, for the council in the school to be aware of those different kinds of style learning, a student with a special need. Student also will have different motivation. Some of them could be motivated by getting extra credit or extra point or by award from the teacher. An extra star next to the exam, next to the grade could take the student far and make him feel proud. So again, we need to always encourage and be positive.
Thank you, Mr. Matarri. Next, Mr. Santiago. What is your position on busing to private schools? What changes would you enact if any?
We're specifically, specifically talking about busing only, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So busing to private schools, I don't think I have, yeah, I don't have an issue with busing to private schools. But it is a budget, right? The transportation budget and it still should be monitored, just like anything else. So, you know, is the budget increasing? Why is that? Is it, you know, do we have an increase of kids who, you know, have to travel farther? And then again, as I mentioned earlier, seeking out any kind of government or other entities who can help us perhaps with that budget, with the transportation issues, seeking out other public-private partnerships, whatever it is, however we can offset or bring in other solutions that can help us with it. But just, you know, I really don't think I have an issue with busing because they're Clifton students, right? They're going to another school and we're talking about busing. But that budget should still be monitored and making sure there's not wasteful spending, just like any other item. That's, that's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Webb, there is a need for substitute teachers in Clifton. Why are they underpaid and what would you do differently?
So this is an issue across the board, right? There has been a lot of trouble hiring teachers in general, employees in general. I think it's a post-COVID kind of world where it's just very difficult to hire people and keep people. Part of that is just general budget, right? I mentioned the, the, that we're not getting, you know, funded as we should from the state. So making sure that the money is there, making sure that we're allocating correctly so that the correct amount of budget goes to fund substitute teachers as well as other teachers, right? Everyone should earn a living wage and have a salary that they deserve. The other thing is thinking about why there is this teacher shortage. Is it related to security? Are there other things, other concerns that teachers have? Do they need more flexibility, right? What can we do to make the school system a great place for teachers to work? So that we get top candidates and so we get top teachers within our school system. And that would extend to substitute teachers as well. So it's kind of a holistic view of how do we get the best teachers? How do we make sure that they are well compensated, they are appreciated? And they feel, you know, like they are, they have the ability to put their best foot forward and really give over all the skills that they want to give over to their students and make sure that they are able to teach the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Webb. Mr. Mahia, there is a great need for substitute teachers in Clifton. Why are they underpaid and what would you do differently?
When it comes to substitute teaching, I've noticed a trend. I have the opportunity to attend schools in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Connecticut. And one thing I see is a teacher shortage, especially here in New Jersey. I know they, we mentioned, we don't currently have a true teacher shortage. I'd say that is not true. We have substitute teachers who are basically there long-term. They're there, they're hired for a whole year to teach a subject, whether it be business, criminal justice, mathematics or English. For the most part, these teachers are qualified, but they don't hold their teacher education certificate from the state. Working in the graduate school and working as a GA for school education, I was in charge of basically holding down the hours and seeing and making sure that these teacher candidates were qualified to enter the schools and to graduate the right qualifications to be teacher candidates in each school district. With that said, many schools are competing to basically get people as early as juniors and sophomores to come in and substitute and have the opportunity. Yeah. That way, um, teacher candidates have the opportunity to come into, to our schools. Something that I think Joe mentioned before is direct pipelines. We obviously want to have our girl, our own Clifton students. We could have that with many teacher colleges that we have, like King University, one of the best teacher universities. We could have that with many teacher colleges that we have, like King University, one of the best seed universities here in New Jersey, Montclair, Felician, Bloomfield College. We can even do, do a fair thing, which has a history of doing with other schools around the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahia. Mr. Brunsack, what is your plan in dealing with the opposition to the 2022 gender slash sex education standards?
We need to remember that no one should be made to feel ashamed, embarrassed and afraid of who they are, whether in regard, in its regards to religion, race, ethnicity, political affiliation or sexuality. For many people, however, their sexuality is a personal, personal thing. And topics like that should be discussed with people close in their lives, trusted family and friends. We're talking about our students, most of whom are under adolescent age. We should be concerned as parents, as educators and other stakeholders about whether or not our children have a 21st century skill set in order to become successful, productive adult human beings. That's the main concern. Now, if there are organizations out there, including the uh, Busake County Islamic Center organization. Yeah. I, I don't know if you're affiliated with them, but they even sent, you know, on public, uh, on um, Facebook, they, they expressed their concerns as well. So there are a lot of people that are concerned. And what wasn't referenced tonight is verbatim, this, the, the education standards, the health education standards that were referenced. So is that something that wasn't referenced tonight? My main objective is to get kids a grade A education and fix the learning gap associated with the COVID learning losses from the remote learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunsack. So now we'll be doing our two-minute closing remarks. So feel free to remark on any questions that did not come up, that you did not um, get the chance to answer and you can give the audience your final message.
Final message, right? To the residents of the city of Clifton, I want to let you know that I want to help create stronger ties between the school board and other stakeholders. I have a personal interest in preserving and improving the quality of our school system. I believe in equality, public education for current and future students. Bringing an informed, thoughtful, conscious and respectful approach to the process of decision-making. Education, educators and administrators lend their expertise to create the best environment and opportunities for students. Parents, students and everyone else in the community deserves the best service from these professionals. No less should be expected from board members. This November 8th, I urge you to vote for change and vote number one on the ballot for Mark Brunsack. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Brunsack. Next, Mr. Richard Mahia.
So in the night, I just want to thank the guy in the pack for hosting this event for all of us here. I know I like to see the community engagement. I haven't seen some of you, haven't spoken to some of you as well here. Um, so that's great. Uh, with that said, I want to leave you guys with this. Um, growing up, I never saw myself in this position. This was a decision I took maybe two years ago. Um, I took it at first last year, but then I was lied to by some city officials saying I wasn't old enough to run, um, which apparently was not true. Um, I learned from various different people that I was lied to and was basically trying to get skinned because people thought that I wasn't qualified enough or that, you know, I'd have a chance, it would be the wrong voice for our education. Um, I've actually been recruited by many people to run for different positions around the state and I've obviously said no because our education is something I hold deep to my heart. Um, growing up, you know, I thought I hated school. I hated it. Um, the experience I had was in kindergarten when I told my mom, hey, I don't want to go to school anymore. And I remember, um, Principal Salazar, the basically dragging me inside the school, telling me, hey, you gotta be twice as good as everybody else. Why? Because at the end of the day, you know, I'm Hispanic and there are things that I have to work for harder only because of who I am. Um, I held that up until, you know, I was a sophomore in high school and from there on, my perspective really changed. Um, especially now in college, uh, I think to myself that every student needs a voice. I've advocated for our students everywhere. Um, I've been a part of SGA government and I was voting unanimously my sophomore, junior and senior year. And unfortunately, in my graduate year, I wasn't eligible to be sitting by the president because I was a graduate student. I like to be the voice of the community. With that said, not, I don't want to just represent our voters or our students and teachers who don't have the chance to vote in our election and ask to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahia. Ms. Weg.
Uh, so I want to take a minute to address one of the questions on the arts, um, question that came up. Um, the question was if arts should come before any other uh, topics than education and something that needs to be embedded in everything we do. Um, you know, the point of school isn't to learn and set yourselves up for a career, but it is also formative years to be able to figure out where you fit in and where your skills are and where you, where you thrive and where you flourish. And that includes art. So that's not, you know, something that uh, should come second to education, that is hands in hand in education and, you know, figuring out where you belong and where you fit in, you know, and so you know where your skill sets are at when you graduate. So that's one thing that I wanted to definitely address. Um, in closing, thank you to the pack for hosting tonight's forum. I hope, um, this helped you get to know me a little better. I want to emphasize that I have a proven track record of getting things done and working with others. I have ideas and goals for my term, but when it comes down to it, we can't do anything without working together and listening to each other. I asked that when you go to vote, think about who has the skill sets to enhance our school system. We need level-headed people who understand real world, real world challenges. And there will be a need for someone who understands budgeting with several commissioners currently rolling off. I don't have the answers, but I am equipped, all the answers, but I am equipped. We are very fortunate to have a board and school administration who cares about the students and I'm looking forward to having the opportunity to use my skills and background to enhance our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weg. Mr. Santiago.
Thank you. Thank you again to the Palestinian American Community Center. Thank you guys all for coming out and actually I commend the pack for doing this and holding this forum so people can engage and ask questions and get to see us. So thank you again. Um, as I mentioned, you know, I'm a 28-year uh, resident of Clifton. What I didn't mention is I'm a property owner. I don't think I mentioned that. So right here in Lakeview, my wife and I raised our kids and we've paid taxes all those years. So, um, I look at the property taxes as an investment, right? Um, our taxes are an investment in the, in the schools, in our community. And, um, you know, a part of our job is to make sure that, um, it's invested wisely and we get a return. So when I was talking about not having an issue busing to private schools, that's actually as a private property owner. So, um, but yeah, I, on the Clifton Disabilities Committee, uh, as a part of Lakeview Civic Association here, we have to work together. We have to advocate. We have to represent the city professionally. And, um, we have to look for ways to move our, our community forward and bring awareness and again, to advocate. So that's something I will bring to the Board of Education if I'm lucky enough to get your vote. Again, Anthony Santiago, number four. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Santiago. Mr. Abdullah Matarri.
Okay, in, in closing, I would like first to conjugate two questions that briefly. The one about the art and the one about the crime. First of all, art should be part of any curriculum and don't forget, we call it the art of teaching. So how, how to address and how to bring it. Uh, crime is there. We need to ensure that we're going to have an environment, our foster environment, that have no discrimination, no harassment. And, uh, we need to promote beer conduct for our students. We need to show them that they will have future. They, they will see the end of the light where they're going to be a leader in the society and the community. And one way to do this is to use art to take all that energy that they have in extra curriculum in the school while they're in the school, under the supervision. Again, we could show them how they could be successful by bringing their beer that already graduated, become doctors or nurses or engineer or teacher. They should see the example in themselves. So that's how we could bring that down and also to work with all stakeholders from police to parents. In closing, again, I would like to thank the back, back. It's not only in Clifton, back spell all over to other cities and to other venues. And I come from back and I have a vast experience. Uh, I've been teaching for 23 years. I have a long, a long, long experience in curriculum design, instruction, uh, teaching, hiring, uh, recruiting, counseling students. So I would like to apply all this and to be back to Clifton, to what they give me and they give my family at large. So I would like to improve the teaching. Vote number five for Matarri for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matarri. Next, Mr. Law.
I want to just touch on the, um, substitute teacher shortage. Um, I feel we need to invest more in the substitute teachers. Um, everybody knows cost of living is going up, so people can't just work one job. And substitutes only get a call when they are needed. So if another job comes up, they're going to go to that job, which shortens our teachers for the students. A lot of, um, they need support too for substitute teachers. They need as much of support as they do as a regular teacher. And just with everything going up, they gotta really, substitute teachers have to make a decision. We all have to make decisions when it comes to everything constantly going up the cost of living. Um, in closing, as a new voice on the, on the board, I will go bring a fresh and diverse ideas. I will also be the voice of every single parent and student in Clifton. My slogan on the ballot, putting students first. Because I believe that in the essence, what we do, what we like to do, put our students first. Additionally, if you come through Clifton, the slogan says, "The city that cares." We need to put that more emphasis, um, on being on a board that cares for the best interests of the, of the, uh, students in Clifton. Our goal is to create an atmosphere where students can grow to be the best individuals, neighbors and citizens in our community. I am a husband, a father, community liaison and also Clifton 14U football coach. I am passionate about serving my community and I would like to be honored to serve you guys in a capacity. Please pick six on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Mr. Joseph Canova.
Thank you. And, and thank you again for the pack for, for hosting tonight. Um, so anybody who runs needs to run for the right reasons. Your heart has to be in it. This is an unpaid position. Right? There's zero dollars here. You're, you're literally just giving your all to something for nothing in return. Um, and if there is nothing in return, maybe we shouldn't run. Because what, what for me is their return is the gratification that students are having a good time, uh, that our community is coming together and connecting, that we're making friends and that everyone strives together for the end goal. Um, I'm a part of the school three HSA. I'm a part of the CCMS HSA. I'm on the board event. I'm on the SBA board. I provide the entertainment for the eighth grade CCMS dance, again, all free. The school three trunk or treat, the entertainment there, the CCMS trunk or treat, the field day, I provide that entertainment for that night. And actually, that's a great event where, where parents come out and people socialize toward. Um, I, uh, I participated in all the Facebook groups. I know not all the candidates here did. I think that's an excellent way to engage people, whether or not, um, they're, they're on Facebook. I think the people there deserve at least your, your opinions on, on the questions addressed. Um, and I think just being available to the people and answering their questions is, is a very big thing for, for someone who's in, uh, in a position like this, because you're dealing with people's children. What more near and dear to their heart than their children? Uh, so it's very important that you get, you get out there and you talk to the people and you understand what they want because this role, again, you're one of nine, but five matters and five decide the fate of the future of education here in Clifton. It's very important that you get out there and vote. Um, I know, I know for me, the, the best thing is graduation. Because that's when you see all the parents and all the children and they run across there and they get their degree. And there's so much, so much excitement and the family's just like, for me, that puts it over the top. And that's really what we're here for, is to make sure that the kids actually walk on a graduation and graduate and graduate with their students and then have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Ms. Samantha Basford.
Thank you, pack again, for hosting us. The only organization that put us in person to be able to speak to everyone. So I'm very grateful for that opportunity. Um, I have a lot to say about the other questions, but I'm going to put it on Facebook later at tinyurl.com backslash Sam Bass BOE. I will talk a lot about these questions. First, I'm a fierce ally. I'm a proud ally to all. And if there is something that is, I think is harmful, I'm going to speak up against it. And you can be whoever you want to be at any age and that is more important to me than my candidacy. And I will say that here on this microphone. I'm a young woman. I'm an independent thinker. I can critically think and I can problem solve. I am ethical and because I'm a conduct officer at a university, I'm able to be unbiased and I'm able to step outside of myself. I'm authentic. I am dependable and I'm resourceful. And I will roll up my sleeves even when it's uncomfortable. My leadership qualities and my skill sets are adaptable to anything. I don't have the answers to everything and that is okay because I will find the answers. And I'm not going to make up an answer just because I think you want to hear it. I can promise you, this is who I am. You will know where I stand. And I won't back down just because it's the unpopular opinion. If there's anything that you can remember today, my name is Samantha Basford. I am eight F on the ballot. I graduated in 2008 and our elections on November 8th. So I got angel numbers on my side. Again, my website is tinyurl.com backslash S A M B A S S B O E. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you to our wonderful moderator. Let's give her a wonderful round of applause. Very proud of you, Jenna. And thank you to all our wonderful candidates for sharing their answers and their views on all the questions that we and you all presented today. So let's give them all a round of applause as well. Uh, we want to remind you all that November 8th is election day, but early voting has started. Um, it's Monday through Saturday from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And Monday, there is no early voting and then Tuesday is the election day. So please make sure to go out and vote. Um, I believe Clifton Memorial Library on Pajeeh Avenue is the place to go. So we want to remind you all to vote. If anyone has any questions, concerns, doesn't know where to go, please call us. We're happy to help you get there. If you need a ride, I'm happy to give you a ride as well. Um, with that being said, if the candidates don't mind to take a group picture, um, in front of our sign and we appreciate you all and we hope you all have a wonderful night. You're so amazing. Very proud of you. That was like also complicated and you held it up.